Any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, let's keep going. Just one thing real quick about underexpend, budget creep, and some other ideas. So just make sure you watch out for natural underexpenditures. So, and this can include like maybe you have staff turnover and stuff. That budgeted, that that money budgeted toward their salary might not get paid to somebody. And so you have a little bit of extra. You don't want to spend that on, you want to be careful how you spend it. And then you have the reward programs for creating an underexpend. You don't want to say, hey, you didn't spend this money, so we're taking this out of your budget. You don't want to always do that unless it makes sense. You want to reward, reward your departments for being savvy and saving you money and saving with one times, just one time things. Because that just gets them to keep doing it. So if they are able to save you money on something and be smart about it, then reward them. Make sure that you're, you're, you're making them want to keep giving that for you. And then another fun thing is that focusing on outcomes rather than outputs, that's a big deal. That ensures that your budgeting decisions lead to meaningful improvements in your community rather than, than just measuring activity levels. So an example of that is, you, you might have a goal that you, you want to, you want to fix two miles of road in your, in your city. But rather than focusing on, on, oh, we fixed two miles of road, maybe focus on, we have a 30% decrease in, in bond tires or accidents as a result of the fixed roads that we did. So focus on those outcomes rather than the outputs. I think that, that makes it so you improve systems more often. Budget creep, be careful, really careful about budget creep. That has to do with reclassifying your employees in your year. If you hire anyone and you, you hire them above district level, that could, that could change your expectations in your budget. Calm time, that's a big deal because you have to pay that out. If somebody leaves and they have a bunch of calm time that you weren't expecting to pay, and they're like, hey, I found a different opportunity, I'm going to go here, and they have 100 hours of calm time. I'm not sure if you allow calm time in Francis, but if you do, be really careful about that. Maybe put some limits on the max of calm time you have available to approve. And then make sure people are taking their vacation so you, you don't, you don't have to pay calm time when they leave. So that's kind of a big deal. And then grants, if you have a grant, don't use, basically don't use ongoing expense, not the ongoing expenses or one-time revenue for ongoing expenses. Because that will bite the crepe in there and then you'll be stuck with things in your budget that a grant, maybe you have a grant that's set up for a year or two. You'll, you'll have this funding place, but then after that it goes away. Don't find things that are going to be ongoing with that grant. So that makes sense. Another thing is, if you don't understand something about your budget or, or about the, the rules about budgeting, just ask questions until you do. If you're a council worker that's new or your staff over that's new, don't be afraid to ask questions. Keep asking until you understand so that you know what you're doing. And so you know what your budget's doing. And so you know how to be effective and helping and, and provide those, those good recommendations and good advice to the others around you on your, on your council staff. Breathe, text me things. The point for me to, to also educate the public about, about things because if you can educate the public on how budgeting works and how you're spending your money, then they'll be more supportive of, of times when you, when you maybe have to raise taxes a little bit because of services that you want to rock with it. They'll understand what it costs for certain things. And so don't be afraid to educate them and tell them, hey, this is how it works. Come and talk to us, come, come give your opinions on, on what a budget looks like and what you think. And, and they'll help you, they'll help you be creative and, and give your best as, as they possibly can. Any questions, any ideas on this slide?
No, hey Spencer, I hate to cut you off, but we've got a public hearing that we need to get to. So can, can you wrap up in just a couple of minutes? Sorry, thanks.
I've finished these last few slides, I have like two slides left. So I didn't worry you, especially because I can't hear, I can't see yet, so.
So yeah, we just need to wrap up, move out of public hearings, so we have to finish up these two and then that'll be good.
Hey, sounds good. So just make sure that, because there's a rule that cities are permitted to accumulate, they retain earnings or fund balance. You can, as a, as a city, can only retain 35% of its general fund in your main day fund. So just make sure that you're, that you're, that you're doing what you're supposed to do with that. If you have more than that, then you can talk to me about what you can do. Or I'm sure that you, I'm sure you guys know what, what you're supposed to do with actually putting a capital facility, a capital fund and save that for capital projects if you have more than 35%. That's also what this next slide is, capital improvement, improvement plan. Just make sure this is a dedicated fund for those capital projects, down the road. And you, you've had capital projects going on in your town, your new city hall, it looks really great. I was hoping that I could come and present there, but all comes to it. And then any transfers, just make sure you do your transfers right and follow code to do those. Whether it be if it's in an department, you just need the budget officer approval. If we have good apartments, it has to be by council. And if it's between funds, you have to follow the more rigorous process to do those things. So just make sure you follow the process. And, and that's it. Just a quick summary. Budgets aren't too bad. I actually, I'm a veteran, so I, I kind of like them. If you need any help or have any questions with your budget and you'd like someone for it, just need some advice or need some templates or things like that, just let me know, I can help with anything that you need help with. And thanks for letting me present tonight. Do you have any questions before I let you go?
I think we're good, thank you.
Thank you, Spencer.
Yeah, any questions? No questions?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
May I just speak out to me, Katie and Suzanne?
Thanks, well, thanks, that was some good information.
Okay, thank you, we'll talk to you again soon.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You too.
Apologize for that, little bit of a delay in changing the agenda. We'll go to the public hearing, City Center Zone Architectural Review for the Code Text Amendment. There's a staff report, Katie, let's go to you.
Okay. So first I'm going to pull up, I'm going to pull up our zoning map just so that we're all on the same page. Oh my gosh, that's working, okay. Sorry, I have to pull this up before. This is our francisutah.gov, just for everyone that's here. If you want to jump on our website at some point, we've got a lot of good information on here, like our zoning map that's right here. So the zoning that we're talking about, making this change in, is the City Center Zone, which is in light blue. It's around the four-way stop. Let's see, most of these right now are used as residential. One of the developments that we're looking at, the Town Center, is here on these three parcels, so that's the one corner. The Frontier Store and Cafe is over here, it looks like that's, sorry, right here, that is being sold. Then it goes down the hill a bit. It does extend on the north side up to Francis, past Francis Commons on their front edge. And then a little bit on the east and west sides as well. So let's just jump into the ordinance and the, what's proposed here. So Mayor Foreman directed staff to initiate a Code Text Amendment to consider increasing the maximum number of building stories allowed in the City Center Zone. The current code limit structures to three stories and the amendment proposes increasing the limit to four stories. So just to reiterate, this isn't a height change. This is the, changing the maximum number of allowed stories. I know there's been some confusion about that. There was a code amendment to increase the building height to 45 feet. That was approved in August 2024. And I know it's also confusing because before that we had some other amendments we looked at and portions of those were passed and portions were not. One of them had to do with the parrot pit wall. We looked at increase, allowing parrot pit walls that were 10 feet and that did not get approved. But then later we looked at just increasing the overall height to 45 feet and that did get approved. So the purpose of the height amendment back in August was to incentivize development in the City Center Zone and to increase the amount of tax revenue the city will receive from development in this area. We, when we looked at changing that height, we probably should have looked at this amendment concurrently, but it was overlooked at the time. And so now we're looking at it again. The City Center Zone was established to create a strong commercial identity at the heart of Francis City. It includes roughly a 650 to 1,000 foot radius surrounding the flashing four-way stop at the intersection of 32 and 35, like I showed you on the map. So our general plan has some guidance to help direct us in making this decision on whether to, whether or not to approve the code amendment. Our mission statement is to, that the city of Francis has a core mission to provide the highest quality of life in a rural atmosphere through essential infrastructure, public safety, and recreation by allowing responsible growth within the constraints of fiscally responsible government. For our land use vision, Francis will continue to be a rural and family-friendly community. Preservation of our agricultural heritage, dark skies, scenic views, and open spaces are our priority. Growth will be sustainable, well-planned, and consistent with the zoning map and general plan. Then we have a whole bunch of economic development goals that are applicable here. I'm not going to read every one word for word, but one of the main ones is that the rate of commercial growth will be higher than the rate of residential growth. We want to promote a positive environment for businesses. We want to strengthen the city's tax base. We want to create and maintain a sustainable economic base for Francis City, including providing tax revenues. We want to have convenient shopping and restaurants. And we want to improve, diversify, and increase the tax base, again, another tax base goal. And that comes from economic development activities to mitigate residential property tax increases, which actually kind of flows in nicely with that budget discussion we just had. So that is why we have those economic development goals, is to try to keep our taxes low and to have services for our residents. Okay, this item was discussed and reviewed by the Planning Commission in their January meeting. They are forwarding it to the City Council with a negative recommendation, four to one. The Planning Commission cited the number of negative public sentiment comments. So they had about 15 to 16 written negative comments. There were also several in the meeting that were negative as well. Their comments and the concerns expressed by the Planning Commission were that a four-story building will fill out of place in Francis and apprehension about the architectural design of a 45-foot four-story building as their reasons for the negative recommendation. The dissenting commissioner was okay with allowing up to four stories and felt that design concerns can be addressed during the architectural review process. I'll just note this and we'll talk about it more later. But the motion on this item also included a recommendation that the City Council consider a moratorium pausing City Center and Commercial Zone applications so that the code can be amended. This will be discussed, as I said, on a later agenda item under the pending ordinance item. So my recommendation is to discuss the proposed amendment and motion, one of three options. If you feel like this is in the best interest of the city, you can approve it. If you feel like it's not in the best interest of the city, you can deny it. Or if you need more time to discuss it, we can table it as well. This is a public hearing for, for this item tonight. We did notice the hearing in accordance with state and local law. We have a couple written comments that I put in your Dropbox, so, and they will be part of the record of the meeting. So that, that's it for me, unless you have any questions. And then the, sorry, this would be the exhibit that goes along with the ordinance. And this is pretty simple as far as code amendments go. We're just changing, the proposal is to change the, the limit from three to four stories in the architectural review for the City Center Zone. Okay, that's it.
All right, any questions or comments from the council? I'm not sure Katie, I was kind of looking, I'm not sure I caught it. Did you mention that the, the two written comments are negative comments?
Yeah, they are negative and they are in Dropbox.
I'm not going to, in the interest of time, I'm not going to read each of those, but they are in opposition.
Right.
Okay. Any questions, comments, concerns from the council before we open the public hearing? Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We asked that any members of the public who have comment, please come to the lectern, state your name for the record. And then also just a reminder that we don't all have to agree, but we can be civil. So with that, we'll open it up to the public hearing.
Excuse me, my name is James Gray, I live at 1744 South McNeil Circle. I do want to state that I am opposed to increasing it from three to four. I understand that it doesn't affect the potential height of the constructions that we're looking at. I think if more of us had been paying more attention to what was going on in August, you would have found this volume of opposition to the 45 feet as well. That's neither here nor there. Going to the four-story, you are still increasing the volume of people that we are having to deal with. The more we increase that volume for, you know, we recognize a lot of this discussion is around a very right next door, immediate construction. But the decision made here tonight affects the next one and the next one and the next one and how large those can be and how much volume those bring in. Moving it to the four stories and permitting that volume brings one positive, that revenue. However, the negatives encountered to that do not justify that increase in revenue to the city. We need to find other ways, more options, perhaps even greater actual residence discussion with the council to identify what the members of this town are willing to see move forward and what we are drastically opposed to. And so I just want to say that I am opposed to this. I recognize that there is the revenue benefit, but the negatives are significantly stronger. And I strongly encourage you to notice the number of people who are here who just sat through a government budget meeting to make sure that their voices were heard. That is how passionate we are about this subject. I do encourage you to recognize that those of us who come to this lectern, we are probably all also in support of that moratorium so that there can be further discussion with the members of the city in what the city really needs and the best way to accomplish that. But we do not believe that the current path is that best way. Thank you.
My name is David Sutherland, I live at 1162 Village Drive. I would also like to recommend the council reject the Code Text Amendment that's proposed. As mentioned by the previous commenter, I think you're seeing the citizens are very concerned about the direction that the city's been heading in terms of commercial development. And we're finally becoming engaged. We previously felt that we had elected individuals and trusted in the direction that those elected officials were taking our city. And we're caught off guard in August when the building heights were raised. We have an opportunity now to stop that trajectory and take a pause and see if that's the way we want to go. The attendance here at this meeting, as well as the comments that have been sent in to council, as well as the Planning Commission last month are indicative of that. Also, just under a month ago, started a petition regarding this specific Code Text Amendment as well as the overall general trend. And that's had almost 400 signatures without actively taking it door-to-door, trying to drum up business for that. But that, that just speaks to the concerns of the citizens and the community on the direction that we're heading. So again, I would like to recommend that we reject the Code Text Amendment, uphold the Planning Commission's recommendations. In addition, seriously consider a moratorium on commercial development in the city so we can take a pause, gather with the stakeholders in the community, figure out what we're, what we would like to see going forward. The intent that you had of attracting commercial development has been over-effective and we're attracting development that none of the community wants. Thank you.
I'm Jesse Coon, I live on Lambert Lane. And my, my property was annexed into the city in '24, last year I guess it was. But this hotel is going to go in whether it's three-story or four-story. The question is the four-story. There's only 17% of this hotel is going to be at four stories. The rest of it, I don't see where you'd want to structure completely look like a box. Architecturally, up and down makes it look good. You're going to have restaurants in there. You're going to have quite a bit, well, your general fund that we just listened to for an hour, he's going to be able to supplement his budget a little bit off of this because you're going to have a restaurant. You've got so many rooftops being approved in this community that you're going to have to catch up. You've got a nice part of town, you've got a wonderful building here. I think it's part of yours responsibility to have some fiscal responsibility to yourself and the community to try to get as much income as you can. Thank you.
I'm Brad Phillips, live on 850 Hilltop Court. I agree with Jesse's statements there. I say if we're going to build something that's coming, it's zoned for it. I say we make it nice and let's do the four stories. Let's make something that Francis can be proud of here. Like change is coming, development's coming. This project looks good to me, I say we go ahead with it.
Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Hancock and I live at 551 Aspen Road. So I'm here to strongly oppose the allowing of four-story buildings. I would also like to request a revote and return the maximum building height to four, to 40 feet. My first point, the opposition that I share with hundreds of others, we have petitions. I notified people about this just a few hours ago on Facebook and have many, many comments where other people oppose it. But I think number one, it does not align with Francis City's mission and vision. Katie mentioned that our mission and vision is the preservation of agricultural heritage, scenic views, dark skies, open spaces, and an increased quality of life in the rural atmosphere. I don't see how four stories aligns with that and I don't see how we can improve that. The other thing, I think it's going to provide an incredible strain on our emergency services, infrastructure, parking, traffic. And so for all those reasons, I strongly oppose the four-story height. The, the second point is I would like to formally request a revote on allowing the 45 height building maximum that was approved in August. It's interesting to me because I have been to many of these meetings, unless I've been out of town, and the Planning Commission meetings. And it's been commented that, well, it's passing, there's not much we can do. And Katie even just mentioned, well, we probably should have reviewed this with that one. So my question to all of you is, why don't we do that? Let's review it. And, and I understand there are people that want this to happen, but let's get public comment in. Let's make sure that nothing was slipped through the cracks. I've heard a lot of Francis residents say they feel like something nefarious is going on and there's corruption. And I just want to bring it to the surface and say that's what I'm hearing. So my question to you, I actually have a question, what can we do? If, because it does seem, the Planning Commission said, well, we thought that it was going to be a precipitate wall or something like that. So, so that's my question, what can we do?
I mean, basically it just has to be another Code Text Amendment.
So is that something that we as citizens should propose a Code Text Amendment to revote on the 45? Because I think that's what's happening is it's a little bit, oh, well, it, it moved from 40 feet to 45 feet and now it's four stories instead of three stories. It feels like we're inching here. And it feels to me, and I think a lot of residents, that Francis City Council members and public servants were, were going after a cash grab instead of what residents want.
So, I mean, is it possible to do another Code Text Amendment? Yes, it's possible. I would just point out that when this Code Text Amendment was here, there was maybe two people in the meeting. It was the same, it was noticed the same as every other meeting. So it's, it's a little bit difficult to retroact at that, but it's not impossible.
Great, I would like to propose that motion. I don't know if I'm allowed to do that, but I think the other thing is, what I'm hearing is Francis City residents don't feel like that there's enough notice. It's really hard when agendas are posted 24 hours before. And I mean, I would be happy to jump on, can we post things on Facebook and just let people know? I understand people oppose my opinions as well. But I think we can do a little bit better job of letting people know what's happening and what's on the agenda. Yeah, and then I would also like to second as.